Good morning, everyone, to the regularly scheduled meeting of Committee of the Whole. I am Councilmember Andrew Johnson. I will be chairing the meeting today because Councilmember Glidden and Council President Johnson are at a meeting around the Orange Line and funding for that. So we appreciate their service on that important transit project. We do have quorum today. We have Councilmembers Gordon, Reich, Bender, Quincy, Yang, Goodman, and Frye. And we have four items on the agenda. I'll be adding a fifth, a staff direction from Councilmember Frye. We have also been joined by Councilmember Palmasano. And first what we'll do is take care of our consent item related to classified service ordinance. So is there any discussion on that item by my colleagues? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion passes. The motion carries. We will go ahead then and with our public hearing, open that up for our target market program ordinance. And actually, let's have staff first come up and just brief us on that, and then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing after that.
Good morning, Chair Johnson. My name is Nurya Rivera Vandermeide. I'm the deputy city coordinator for the City of Minneapolis. And I stand in front of you, not in that capacity, but really as a representative of the larger supplier diversity team, many of which are behind me now. So I must have lost a coin toss somewhere, and here I am, telling you a little bit about where we are. Today, we want to talk to you a little bit and bring you an update on the target market program. And before we go into that in depth, I wanted to just give a little bit of background on where that came from. In October of last year, we received a staff direction to look at a variety of ways in which we can increase contracting opportunities for particularly our small businesses, and a way we can simplify our own procurement processes, and a way that we can perhaps bring technology into the fray to assist businesses doing business or contracting with the City of Minneapolis. And amongst large staff direction, we see before you a variety of issues. But in particular, today, we're going to talk about Item 1C, which talks about the Small Business Target Market Program. To give a little bit of additional context, and I promise I won't go through every single one of these slides, but I want to say that a lot of work, I want to honor a lot of the work that's been gone by staff before me or before this group even started. And a lot of this work has been done, a lot of advancements and improvements that have been done either in civil rights or in business licensing, in procurement within finance and property services have been done to review and simplify the RFP process, to try to unbundle more contracts, to provide some information and provide additional resources, particularly, I mentioned our BTAP program within CPED, who's really been striving to provide technical resources to businesses as they move forward. So a lot of work has been done on that. Our supplier diversity team, which is really a cross-section, as you see behind me, of staff from a variety of offices, developed a one-to-five-year plan, which we came before you and presented at the end of January of this year. And in that plan, one of the things, and you'll see some themes that emerged in the presentation before you, in that plan, we talked about a variety of topics we were going to look at, from disaggregating our data, to doing a spend analysis, to really reviewing our modules and trying to create a vendor portal that actually could be used both for external vendors, but also by staff, to try to match opportunities to vendors. And again, in those was the development of a target market program, which is really why we're here today. As we talked about the target market program, we wanted to also make sure that we were informed by businesses themselves. We know that oftentimes that we move forward in the city and we try to create new programs, but we perhaps are not informed by the people who are most impacted by the things that we do. And we really wanted to make sure that we did some outreach. We sent mailing and we provided a survey to over 1,600 businesses, and BTAP was really instrumental in that particular endeavor. We did a focus group, but we had tremendous attendance, and we were very happy to see Councilmember Quincy join us for that focus group. We had over, or around 60 people in attendance for that. And we also did a, we also talked about the target market program in a variety of vendor fairs and other events. And so we tried to get the word out amongst businesses and say, what do you think about our ability to provide additional opportunities, again, specifically aimed at small businesses? And as we did that, we got a variety of respondents. And perhaps I didn't highlight this earlier. This is a small piece of a larger endeavor to expand contracting opportunities to a variety of businesses. Certainly, we have our SUBP program that is targeting women and minority-owned businesses that resides within civil rights, and they have done a lot of outreach and a lot of work in trying to expand that program. We, as a team, will continue to look at additional opportunities to speak to that as well and to try to assist or brainstorm additional opportunities that can be had here. Today, we're really talking about a race and gender neutral program. But I say that as a misnomer almost, because when we know that race and gender neutral programs, if we do better by small businesses generally, we also do better by our small minority and women-owned businesses, because that's the space in which they occupy by and large. So as we talk about this, we, and we send a survey out, we talked about some eligibility requirements of what this program would look like. We made clear that we wanted to make sure that this was a race and gender neutral program. And we heard a lot from businesses. We heard a variety of insights, and I share them with you. We heard that 31% of businesses had worked within the city within the last year, but frankly, 45% had never done business with the city. So a lot of opportunities there to perhaps attract new people to our city. We also saw, as we were looking at a variety of eligibility criteria and what that looks like in terms of gross receipts in particular, we had talked about, starting with, you have to meet SBE requirements that come from the Small Business Administration, and those cutoffs were quite large. They had a cap of $23.98 million. And when we heard and what we see, both in the survey before you and what we heard in the focus group, that those caps were way too high, that in our marketplace, we have a lot of small businesses that don't go anywhere near $23.98 million, and if you're really going to benefit people, we've got to think about those caps in a different way. So as you see here in the slide before you, we saw that the vast majority of respondents had gross receipts under $1 million, and 77% of respondents had less than 20 employees. So we know that we had to figure out how to adjust when we came before you in our proposed recommendations to make sure that we actually captured and did the best by our small businesses in our marketplace. The nice thing that we heard, that despite our initially kind of broad criteria, was that people were generally satisfied with what we saw, and 74% indicated that they were likely to participate in a target market program if the city were to push one forward. And so we were really excited to say that we were on the right track. So again, these are just some additional focus group insights. One of the things I want to highlight here is some general appreciation for, A, can you make it simple? Whatever program you're going to do, can you simplify the process? Can you create some kind of reciprocity with something else that's going on in the city? And in particular, CERT came up, because CERT is something that a variety of small businesses are already a part of. But there are also other certification programs that, again, where this is a race and gender neutral program, we've got a little bit more leeway than when there is potentially heightened scrutiny in other programs that have a race and gender component to them. We also talked a little bit about consideration to creating small business enterprise goals, and I think it's something that we're going to consider in the future. We didn't want to create artificial goals now at the start of a program. We want to take a look at that next year when we know what our baseline is. So we certainly heard that and want to make sure that we move forward on that when we come forward with updates in the next year as well. And again, the consideration about changing the gross receipt caps on size, that when you define size for small, to make sure that you consider what our marketplace is. We also had some parking lot issues beyond the target market program that we're really happy to say are already part of our consideration, is part of our supplier diversity team, which are shortening a timeline for payment for small businesses. We know that businesses, particularly small ones, don't have that length of time in which to get paid. And so we want to think about ways in which we can accelerate that. Improving technology options comes invariably at anything we do in the city. How can we make it easier for vendors to submit their proposals? How can we make it easier for departments to see, to match vendors to opportunities so they're not needing to go to the same well every single time? It's again about expanding those opportunities. So our proposal, as we come to you, is to create a target market program that allows for small businesses to have the ability to respond to city contracts up to $100,000. And that where we would have and how it would generally work is that where we would have a proposal out there, and we have three or more respondents that meet those criteria, and I'll talk about that eligibility criteria in a moment, that they would be then set aside to be the only businesses or enterprises eligible to bid against those contracts. They would be on a level playing field, not perhaps competing against the larger companies that have other types of efficiencies that make that playing field a little less level for them. As we talk about the eligibility, I want to honor the fact that we heard our businesses. And we switched and we modified and revised some of our criteria to reflect that. So as we talk about eligibility, we talked initially about having that in our 11 metro area. We heard from folks that perhaps that can be expanded. CERT requires, or CERT encompasses the 13 metro area plus two Wisconsin counties. We decided not to use Wisconsin and really to keep it in Minnesota, and that would increase the principal place of business to the 13 counties you see here. We also obviously wanted to make sure that folks that are already and have gone through the process of qualifying as an SBE under the Small Business Administration, that we would honor that. And the way in which we would honor what we heard from businesses about making sure that those caps were well-positioned to really pertain to their particular business was to really use the North American Industry Classification System industry codes, the NAICS codes, so that perhaps construction, where you obviously would expect a higher amount of money to be spent, would have a higher threshold than would, say, architecture or engineering firms that would have a $7 million, or an $11 million, or a $15 million threshold. So we want to honor that and make sure that our program mirrors that. The third bullet that you see here is, in order to tie those two together, that staff would be looking to create a general industry category chart, which would be approved and published annually by the chief financial officer. What we're really looking here is to take a look at the average annual gross receipts of the business over the previous three fiscal years, because we know that a business can have certain variations. One year, they can be really terrific, another year, that could wane, and so we wanted to make sure that we captured an average, and that they do not exceed the amount specified in the general industry category code for that particular industry. So again, if we're going to issue an RFP for engineering services, that our cap isn't perhaps $20 million, when the cap for that under SBA is 15, that we would take a look at what the average is. We are going to use a CERT database to make sure that we're accounting for that within our own marketplace, and then setting a yearly cap on that. We want to make sure that we're actually responsive to how our market is changing in the future as well. And so we recommend that this annual category chart get reviewed and approved annually, published annually, so that it keeps in time with what our industry and our marketplace is seeing. We also wanted, we needed a way in which we could have folks register. We want to make a simple form to do that, and whether it's called self-certification or whether it's an affidavit, we will be creating a form in which folks can register as an SBE. Again, our goal here is not to ask about composition of ownership. We are not looking to see if the individual business is a minority or women-owned firm. We're just looking at size. We certainly, after the award of a contract, want to take a look at that, because we should count all our diverse spend wherever that happens. But for purposes of awarding and being a participant in this target market program, we are really limited to looking at this in terms of size. We're also sensitive to the fact that we require a due process review, and we have put in the ordinance before you a right to an administrative review, where if somebody is for some reason not eligible, and again, it is based on size, or has been found that they are not the size that they, that they did not comply with the requirements that we set forth, that we deny them entry into the target market program, that there's a reasonable way in which they can request a review, and we plan to use an administrative hearing officer and provide the due process that's required for that. So we built that into this ordinance as well. We propose a start date of January 1st, 2017, and that will really just allow staff, if this is approved, to start to put into play some of those additional components. There are some policy considerations that need to be put in here, the creation of the industry chart code. There are some tweaks to other places in our Minneapolis Code of Ordinance where it speaks to different thresholds, particularly where it has affirmative action plans required for contracts over $50,000. There's a need to now think about what that looks like for this program, because if it's going to be truly neutral, as our colleagues in civil rights have pointed out, then we've got to make sure that we adjust that elsewhere. And it will allow us to do some targeted outreach strategies so that we make sure that we can get, that we can tell businesses that we hear you and we are open for business, that this is where we want you to come, and this is where we want you to contract with. I wanted to include a little example of professional services and give you a sense of why we decided that $100,000 was a good cutoff for us. There have been some recommendations and some conversations within the group to raise that limit to $250,000, for example. We wanted to make sure we started with $100,000. And here's an impact example for professional services, where the bulk, you'll see, the bulk of contracts are really in that under $50,000 range, where we're already doing a variety of issues. The leap from 50 to 100,000 is 19 contracts, so it would not be huge, whereas conversely, contracts for professional services for 2014 that were over $100,000 amounted to 206. And so that would have been a significant leap to change our program requirements for this, and that's one of the reasons we stuck it at $100,000. And finally, as I mentioned before, there are some additional tweaks that need to come forward to council as we talk about sort of tweaking some other places in the ordinance where we have to make accommodations for this program. We will certainly be coming to council to make sure that we do the appropriate actions. I would be remiss if I, in all this talking, didn't highlight the supplier diversity team, both listed and many of which are behind me. They were the ones who really did the hard work of doing some research, of really figuring out what makes sense, of identifying those areas either with regard to finance or with regard to civil rights and how that works with contract compliance, of really locating where those issues were to make sure that we had a simplified process, that we had an ease of process, and that we considered some of those outreach opportunities with our business throughout the city. And in particular, CPED was helpful in that endeavor as we moved forward. So I stand for questions, if you have any. I also say that staff, staff's smarter than I am on many of these issues, are happy to step in as well.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate the presentation, and we'll save comments for after the public hearing, but if there are any questions at this time? Not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm not sure if we have anybody signed up. Looks like no. So if there's anyone here who has not signed up, please feel free to approach the microphone. Anyone? Anyone? All right, last call. We'll go ahead then and close the public hearing and open it up for comments. We have Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am pleased that this has been brought forward. This is obviously the ordinance introduction and amendments that have been authored by myself, Councilmember Glidden, and now Councilmember Worsami has signed on as a co-author to these packet of ordinance changes. It's a tremendous opportunity, and so I needed to acknowledge, I'm glad the supplier diversity team was pointed out on your last slide, so that way I don't have to say everybody's name. It's already been done. But it's been extraordinary, department-wide, enterprise-wide approach to something that could be, what we're doing, folks, is really just a procurement system change. How we source products for the City of Minneapolis and how we do that really expanded besides just a finance property services kind of department proposal or policy change to something that went across the enterprise. And that's why civil rights had to be involved. That's why it was so important for having the economic development team at CPED involved, because these are the, we wanted Minneapolis companies to be participating in this process. We wanted them participating and representing segments of the community that were frankly underserved by what we were purchasing through, over the years. So it's an exciting opportunity. It's part of our Business Made Simple programs, it's part of our economic development, and BTAP, and working with business associations, and it's a remarkable step forward, and I'm very pleased to have that work done. I did have one question, however, and one was maybe on the professional services side. The difference between the 100,000 and the 250,000 idea, was that something that we wanted to maybe explore a little bit more?
I think it is certainly something, Chair Johnson, Councilmember Quincy, it is something that we have talked about. In fact, I believe it came originally from some of our representatives in civil rights to think about whether a target market program could come up to $250,000. We certainly want to take a look at that. We felt that at this time, we wanted to make sure that we had, again, a baseline of what we're going. That part of this also is lined up with some of the spend analysis that we've been doing as well, to make sure that we knew exactly what our spend is, to make sure that we can make these decisions and determinations across the board. But it could be that in the future, that we come to council and ask that we've seen the success of this program, we actually have reasons for why we want to expand that further.
Right. Well, I think it's a great step forward. It's nice to have that benchmark that we can work from and adapt and be flexible enough that we can always do that. I think to make this formalized, I'd be happy to move this action with the acknowledgement of all the work that Council Vice President Glidden has done on this for the past five years. We started working on this together last term, so it's been something that's been long in the works. I think it's going to make the city easier to operate. I think it's going to invite more people to participate, and as part of that, it will be saving the city money. And that's an important process that allows our departments to source more competitive ideas, new, fresh ideas, and make that database available for more to participate in. So I'm happy to move this amendment, or this new introduction as appropriate. I am confused, though, whether this public hearing needed to be continued rather than closed. What was the procedural thing that needed to happen? Was there something else that needed to come forward at another calendar date?
I will refer to the city clerk. We know that we can, we can move forward on this particular amendment. There will be additional amendments that come forward before this becomes official in January. There may be, with some of the additional amendments that need to take place, perhaps a notice of intent and an RCA that has to be issued, but...
I imagine we'll be able to accommodate that from the legislative record, but I will be happy to move approval of this item.
Great, thank you. I do have a question on this, so maybe I missed it, but is there any way that we're prioritizing Minneapolis businesses over the 13-county businesses?
So that will be a discussion that we have certainly in terms of when we set up the criteria, but for right now, we really wanted to make sure that we take a look at it. There's been a conversation about whether it's a local preference or a best value preference that has been discussions that we've been having and ongoing, and that may be something that we may bring to council as that moves forward.
Perfect. Well, I'm not seeing any other further comments, so I'll just say a few words on this. I want to thank our supplier diversity team for all the work on this, for the coordinator offices' work on this. I think it's just such an important policy change in ordinance. I remember when, first taking office, I had a small business reach out to me. They're located in northeast Minneapolis, and they said, you know, you put out this mailing contract, and there was only one bid back. We weren't even aware of it. We're a union shop, we're local, we can do cheaper prices, but then this big conglomerate came in, and they were aware of it and put in ultimately the only bid. So they wanted to know, how can they do more to create jobs within Minneapolis by securing bids like this? And had conversations with folks, I think it, you know, funneled into all this great work being done by Council Vice President Glidden and Quincy and Worsami and the whole team to really bring this to fruition today. And I think it's just so smart to keep the money within the community and grow jobs here. And I just really want to thank you all on behalf of our small business community, because I know this is really meaningful work and just another one of the many initiatives that is currently happening within the city to make our city more friendly for our small business community. So thank you all very much. With that, we do have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Quincy, not seeing any additional discussion. So all those in favor of passage of the ordinance, amending Title II, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to item number three, our 2016 Sick and Safe Time Quarterly Report with our Departments of Civil Rights.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Val McCorville, and I'm the Director of Civil Rights in the City of Minneapolis. And I am pleased to bring you the first quarterly report on our Sick and Safe Time ordinance implementation. And very similar to Ms. Rivera Vandermeide before me, good work that's happened on this implementation over the last quarter, it's not been done alone. There have been lots of people around the table assisting with the accomplishments that you'll hear about here in a bit, and most of them are in the room, sitting right behind me. Similarly, if there are specific questions related to special segments of the work, there are people in the room, other than myself, who can answer the questions. So without that, without further ado, then, I will move on to the report. You will recall that the requirement to do a quarterly report on Sick and Safe Time implementation is a result of a staff direction that was issued back in May. And before we jump into the meat of the presentation, I do want to apologize if many of you have seen a lot of what we're going to discuss today, because we've been pretty intentional about sending out updates on the work as it's been progressing. So you've been getting updates about every two weeks, and a lot of this you've probably already seen. There are a few new things, but I wanted to just make sure to note that. Over the last, the last three months, you will recall that the implementation date for this ordinance, or the effective date, is July 1st of 2017. So leading up to that date, we have three primary goals that the implementation team has settled on. And you will see those on the screen. I'll read those for people who might not be able to see them. We want to provide businesses and employers the information and tools necessary for compliance. We want to educate employees about their rights under the ordinance and how to assert them. And we want to engage staff and stakeholders for effective implementation of the ordinance. Over this three-month period, we had some key objectives, and I'm pleased that we are able to report good progress on all of them. We really wanted to pull together our internal resources in this early phase of implementation, and we've done that by building the internal staff implementation team. And we also hired our first supervisor of our new division to oversee the Sick and Safe Time ordinance. And he's in the room with us this morning. That's Mr. Brian Walsh in the Civil Rights Department. We've also assigned a staff person specifically to help with some of the outreach and engagement, particularly as it relates to our small business support. And Faith Jackson is also in the room with us this morning. We also wanted to get information out early on the heels of all of the excitement of the passage of the ordinance back in May. So working with the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, Communications, and our IT Department, we created some initial communication tools, and we've also begun some initial engagement. And I'll speak more about that a little bit later into the presentation. And with this first... And with this first quarter report, we wanted to address as many of the council staff directions from May as we are able to. So milestones in this first three months. I mentioned the staff implementation team. You will see the departments that are involved in the work, and they are around the table every Tuesday afternoon from 3:00 to 4:30, and they've been there religiously. I think we've missed one Tuesday, and that might have been the one right after the Labor Day holiday. But they are representatives from the City Attorney's Office, City Coordinator, Communications, from Community Planning and Economic Development, the Business Licensing Division, BTAP, Civil Rights, IGR, and 311. As I mentioned, we've created this new division of Labor Standards Enforcement inside the Civil Rights Department. With the help of the City Coordinator and the Finance Department, we've transferred existing resources from the Coordinator's Department into that new division so that we can pay our new supervisor, but also to begin some of that initial engagement, which for the most part has been translation of materials and working with interpreters and that sort of thing. We've held some initial meetings with stakeholders over the last three months. The SEIU, C-Tool, these are some employee representatives, take action, as well as meeting with representatives from the large business community as well as the small business community. We have engaged with the city's engagement design team. Those representatives are the Clerk's Office, the Equity Division, and the Coordinator's Office, Arts and Culture, as well as Communications, Neighborhood and Community Relations, and 311. And I wanted to specifically talk about the Engagement Design Team, because we are one of the first projects to take advantage of that newly formed team, and that really is to be engaged with this work in a one-stop shop so that we can leverage resources in each one of these offices that I've mentioned to ensure that we are doing the broadest, most culturally-specific outreach and engagement, and we're trying to leverage all of the city's resources that are available to us. One of our other milestones, and I believe everyone has received information about this, one of the first things that happened was the IT Communications and Neighborhood and Community Relations helped get a information up on the city's website. We are most pleased because we were able, in about two weeks' time, to get information, the most pertinent information in the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance up on the city's website in seven languages. And also, we've been disseminating this information through as many networks as we've been able to identify. And I know that many of you have shared this information through your ward newsletters. This information can be accessed through, directly from the city's website, and it can also be accessed through searching, putting Sick and Safe Time into a search engine. One of the other milestones, we've developed a checklist for employers that can be used for an employee to determine if they are in compliance with the ordinance. What you see here is just a screenshot of a portion of that form. There are actually several other questions that employers can check off just to make sure that at a very basic level, they are in compliance with the provisions in the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. The next milestone that we want to talk about is the development of a workplace poster. You may recall that the ordinance requires that the department provide a poster to city employers and work sites in the languages spoken at that work site. And so this is a screenshot of a portion of that poster. This is just the English language version of it on the screen, but this poster is also, will be downloadable and available in the languages spoken on our city work sites. The next slide shows you just a pie chart of the feedback that we've already been getting on the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. You will get an idea here of the categories of questions and comments we're getting. And as you can see, most are coming from employers, which is understandable, and most of them are related to geographic tracking and the availability of certain materials from which employers will need to comply with the ordinance. These next few slides are related to the other council directions that were passed back in May. This first one here, Councilmember Worsami, this was, I believe this was your staff direction related to a small business support. I won't read the entire staff direction, but it is related to developing resources and materials that would support and provide technical assistance and administrative resources to diverse small businesses and new immigrant communities. And so as we flip through the next three slides, I'll just refresh you on what we have been doing with this. This first slide is a downloadable tracking template. This is actually, will be on the website and downloadable for small businesses. It's a very simple Excel spreadsheet with macros running in the background. This will be very simple. All the business needs to do is plug in the name of the employer and employee number, if that's what they use to track, plug in the accrued and used Sick and Safe Time for the relevant period, and the sheet will calculate for them. This will be downloadable from the website. The next page is a screenshot of a portion of what we're calling an affirmation, and this is something that small businesses can use to tell us if they have five or fewer employees. This will help us connect with those businesses to be able to directly provide better resources and assistance to them. You will notice on the screen that the form is set up to provide this affirmation for firms with five or fewer employees, but we can change that number. I know Councilmember Worsami, her staff direction specifically talks about businesses with 15 or fewer, and that's certainly something that we can change on this form, because we want to be able to address the need in the community. The next slide talks about leveraging the existing networks that I mentioned earlier. There are several that exist already in the city. We're already plugged into them, either through individuals who are sitting on the staff implementation team or through meeting specifically with those groups now and into the future. So Business Technical Assistance, the Business Advisory Group, LINK, which is Liquor in the City, the Minnesota Unified Certification Program, the Somali Community Business Forum. And we're also identifying new users as department leadership informs us. We have a group in the Health Department that we are connecting with at the, at the request of Health Department staff. So as these new networks are identified, we are connecting with them as quickly as possible. And we, again, I mentioned, we assigned a staff inside the Civil Rights Department who's, one of her particular assignments will be to work with small businesses, to provide them with the support that they need or refer them to support inside the city and inside the city's small C and big C that they, that they need. Another staff direction that we want to talk about is one, and I apologize that I don't recall whose this was, but it was to address the effect on the business license of failure to comply with the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. The Business License Division was especially called out to help address this. And if we flip to the next page, you'll note that we have a Business Licensing Director on the Staff Implementation Team, Grant Wilson, is here in the room today, and he has mined his ordinance and provided the language that I think will address that particular direction. I'll start reading here. I'm going to read from the bottom up. "But it shall be the responsibility of the licensee to maintain and operate the business in compliance with all applicable laws and ordinances." This is from the Minneapolis City Ordinance 259 to 250. And it says here that "failure to comply with any of these standards and conditions shall be adequate grounds for the denial, refusal, to renew, revocation, or suspension of said license." And the staff in the Business Licensing Division and the implementation team believe that this language in the current ordinance covers this via the slide, the language that you see on the slide. One of the other staff directions was addressed specifically to the Intergovernmental Relations Department. That was to address the potential increase in rates as a result of nonprofit employers implementing the ordinance, especially around rate increases for long-term care, care for people with disabilities, and childcare. And in consultation with the staff from IGR, and I don't believe anybody from IGR is here this morning, but they have been an ongoing member of the Staff Implementation Team, Ms. Bergman has indicated that if there are follow-on questions related to this, that she's happy to address those. But they are working through the policy development process in anticipation of the next legislative session. They began working on this issue earlier this year, and they will work on this through the end of the legislative session and going forward. But IGR has this on their radar, and it is a priority for them. The next staff direction had to do with existing paid time off and paid sick time policies, specifically directing staff to do some research and to find out if, and come back with a recommendation on whether or not these policies can be accounted for within Title II, Chapter 40. And I want to tell you that the staff did put together a recommendation. However, in the time from preparing the recommendation through to date, it has been acknowledged by the stakeholders, both the business community and the employee community and staff, that there were certain other technical amendments that would be appropriate. So in addition to addressing this existing paid time off policy issue, Assistant City Attorney Susan Trammell is also going to address some of those other technical amendments in the agenda item that immediately follows this one. So our objective for the next quarter is that we are going to continue to develop our responses to our frequently asked questions. You may remember, the ordinance requires some rulemaking and other explanatory work to happen over the next several months. We have, will approach our rulemaking in the form of FAQs or frequently asked questions. Those are in the process of being drafted. We expect those to be published in October and with various stakeholders, including representatives of the Former Workplace Partnership Group and others. We will begin to engage, engage the stakeholders from November through March. We're also starting to develop our enforcement procedures, and I'll talk a little bit about that. I often get asked the question, well, how is this new ordinance going to be enforced? And if you remember, in the ordinance, it's at section 40.90, or it is in the current ordinance. I don't know what it's going to look like by the end of the morning, but there's a section on implementation that talks about, and I might have it. That there's, for the first year of the implementation of this ordinance, the enforcement will be more along the lines of mediation and consultation and really working with businesses so they can correct their, the violations that are, that are discovered. It is at 40.90. For the first 12 months, the department must only mediate disputes and issue warnings and notices to correct. And then in that subsequent 12-month period and going forward, we would start to do our regular enforcement. There's another section that people ask me about, and that is, how will the department work with other state and local agencies? That is addressed in the ordinance as well at 40.110, and it gives the director in the department broad authority to work with all relevant city departments, state and federal agencies, divisions, departments, bureaus, institutions, et cetera, to promote and enforce the provisions in the chapter. But specifically related to the enforcement, there are really three kinds of enforcement I think the, that the department is considering. Of course, individuals who believe they've been subject to a violation of the chapter can file a complaint. We are going to work with organizations who will identify violators and victims and refer those individuals to our department. This is working well in jurisdictions that already have sick time ordinances. And also, the ordinance at 40.110 also, again, referencing the strategic enforcement where the department can work with other organizations and agencies to look at where companies may frequently violate labor laws. We can do some strategic enforcement relative, relative to that. We also are beginning to do some education and with employees and the general public. We'll start that in late winter, early spring. We'll launch our full website with all of those downloadable documents that I mentioned earlier in the, in my presentation. And of course, we will seek and utilize the services of the Workplace Advisory Committee that you all approved about a month ago, that recruitment process is currently ongoing. Application closes on October 14th. We'll go through the vetting process that we typically do for that next 30 to 60 days, but we hope to have that, our plan is to have that group seated and working by January 2017. There's contact information on the screen. I don't think that you have it in this presentation. We'll make sure that the clerk gets it. But there are, there are several ways to contact the staff through these websites, staff that are working on the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance through 311, which has been a great partner with this ordinance already. And most of the feedback that I mentioned in the pie charts early has come through 311. We have an email address. We also have a website. That is it. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Director Corville. I am not seeing any comments up here, so I would just like to say, clearly you've all been very busy. Thank you for the thorough work on this. I know it's very important to a lot of our business community, and so seeing all this outreach and all this information put out there is really great, and appreciate the presentation. So with that, I will move to receive and file. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstain, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and we will move on to item number four, Amendments to the Workplace Regulations Ordinance. We are joined today from our City Attorney's Office by Susan Trammell. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Johnson and members of the committee. Susan Trammell from the City Attorney's Office. As part of one of the staff directions that came through council when we passed the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance, staff was directed to look at existing policies and how they may fit within this ordinance. Initially, staff was planning to address these situations through frequently asked questions, but through contacts with the business community and others, the decision was made to proceed with ordinance amendments. And so I have those before you, and I will walk through the various changes that are coming forward. The first section that is being changed is 40.210. That is the accrual of Sick and Safe Time section. And in that section, there are two changes that we're going to be dealt with in frequently asked questions, but due to inquiries from business community, and they wanted some assurances in the ordinance, we determined to add them at this time. The first is to clarify that as you accrue time at the 1 to 30-hour rate, that accrual is in hour increments only. This is similar to that which is in St. Paul's ordinance. And so if you've worked 40 hours, you have one hour on the book. And when you hit 60 hours, you have two hours on the book, that kind of thing. So you don't, at the end of a week, say, have a portion or a fraction of that hour. The other question that was coming up, which was to be dealt with in the frequently asked questions, but which is now in ordinance, is to when do employers need to record this time on the books? And we determined that that would be by any current payroll practices that they use in their industry or other policies that are existing, so long as it's no less frequently than once a month. And so that's... And so that's inserted in 40.210. Also in 40.210 addresses the issue of front-loading, which is an idea that is an alternative to sick and safe time accrual. So under the language that's adopted here and proposed today, this will conform us substantially with St. Paul's idea of front-loading as well. Just want to make that clear. We're trying to gain some consistency with St. Paul's so it's easier for employers. So employers may satisfy the accrual provision if they provide in the first year of an employee's employment 48 hours minimum of sick and safe time, once they've worked their initial 90 days. And then they can use that throughout that first calendar year of employment, and then if they provide an 80 hours every year thereafter at the beginning of the year for that employee's use. If they do that, they have then satisfied the accrual provisions that were otherwise contained in 40.210. So it's an alternative.
I just, I'm going to stop you there and ask a quick question on that. So for providing at least 80 hours of sick and safe time beginning each subsequent calendar year, is that an accrual up until 80 hours at a minimum? Because I know under the typical ordinance here, an employer may satisfy the section under, I'm looking at 40, 210E, an employer may satisfy it by providing 48 hours following the 90 days, which is to your first bullet point that matches up, and providing at least 80 hours at the beginning of, hold on a second here. Okay. I have this right. I guess my question for you is, so in the second year, they would automatically then be providing 80 hours?
At the beginning of the calendar year.
At the beginning, gotcha. Okay.
Yes, Chair Johnson. And this eliminates the carryover provision. So if you provide the 80 as a front-loaded, you do not then carry over anything that you may have had remaining from the front-loaded year before.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Sure.
And Councilmember Fry is in queue as well. Oh, he's out, never mind, forget it.
Those are the, the changes to 40.210. I now want to move to 40.220, which is the use of accrued sick and safe time. The first thing that we did in this section was to clarify compensation, and a lot of questions had come up about the compensation. And so we altered that language in 40.220G. And what it says is that employers must compensate the employee at the same hourly rate with the same benefits as the employee's regular rate of pay for the hours the employee was scheduled to work during the time the employee uses their accrued sick and safe time. Now, the intent is to then define in the definitions what rate of pay means. So the hourly rate of pay is a new definition, and it says the hourly rate for an hourly employee or an equivalent rate for an exempt employee. And then it goes on to discuss the inclusions and the exclusions from that rate of pay. So to address some concerns that council members have had before and to specifically address how we had included in the ordinance previously, the definition includes for rate of pay shift differentials outside of overtime pay, that's at one and a half, and it specifically excludes tips and commissions in the definition. So those have been removed from Section 40.220. These are now included in the definition. So rate of pay will include shift differentials, but rate of pay will continue to exclude tips, commissions, and bonuses. And it will also exclude expense reimbursements, premium payments that are at least one and one-half times the normal rate, cash or other valuables that are in the nature of a gift that's given to the employee, and then profit-sharing plans or other thrift or savings plan contributions, and then plans that, contributions that are made for retirement plans. So all those things are not included in the definition of rate of pay. The next change that we made was to 40.270, and 4270A was amended, is it proposed to be amended? And this has to do with employer records. And the required records, after a lot of discussion on this topic, it's been simplified to clarify that employers need to track the hours for non-exempt employees. And the frequently asked questions will continue to address that for an exempt employee, it's presumed that the employee works 40 hours a week unless otherwise arranged. The department needs to have the hours worked and the hours of leave available and the hours of leave used in order to investigate. And so it continues to contain those three requirements. We did, however, delete a section of 40.270, and that has to do with the tracking of employees who occasionally work in the city. This was done because of employer concerns and because of the issue of having alternative policies such as the front-loading. It doesn't assist the employer if they have an alternative such as front-loading and they front-load all their employees if another ordinance section continues to require them to track the movement in and out of the city. Frequently asked questions will continue to address what records will be necessary because there are other provisions in the ordinance that if a violation is alleged and the employer does not have sufficient records to show what is owing to the employee, then there's a presumption against the employer. Okay? So even though this provision is being removed, because there will be times where you won't need to track because you're front-loading, for example, employers who don't front-load and who don't accrue to their employees regardless of where they work, at least 1 to 30, those employers will still need to track in order to prove that they have provided to the employee who works occasionally in the city what it is they're owed. So these will all be flushed out in frequently asked questions, even though it's being removed for the purposes of not requiring employers with these alternative leave policies that are sufficient to satisfy the ordinance to track changes. The last change that we made is again, in addition, or in response to the staff direction about addressing other sick and safe time policies and other leave policies. This is to Section 40.310, and we added some clarifying language that makes it very clear that the city is not discouraging policies that provide for greater accrual, regardless of whether those are sick and safe time policies or other policies. We want to actually encourage employers to provide greater sick and safe time protections to their employees and other protections to their employees. So that language in 40.310A is just to clarify that. We did make a change in subsection B of 40.310, which relates to these other leave policies again, and that staff direction, such that it clears up that employers are not required to provide additional sick and safe time if they have other leave policies that are sufficient to meet the accrual requirements under 40.210, and that those, that leave that they give their employees may be used for the same purposes and under the same conditions as provided for under 40.220. Under that situation, they are deemed to have a sufficient policy, and they need not provide additional sick and safe time. And those are all of the changes that we are proposing. I would stand for questions if you have any. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Any questions? All right, not seeing any. Thank you for the presentation. With that, we will go ahead and move a passage of these amendments to the ordinance, amending Title II, Chapter 40. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor, oh, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Susan Trammell of Velma Corbell, as well as advocates on both sides, including Take Action, as well as the business community, for working through a lot of these very complex logistics. You know, the overall goal here was to allow employers to exceed the requirements set forth in the policy while simultaneously ensuring that everybody, literally everybody, met the baseline, and I think that we've done that. So this is, and then the second piece was, some of these, some of these provisions were just to further comply with St. Paul's ordinance, which was recently passed. So, thank you, and I would ask that you support the changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Fry. Any additional discussion? All right, not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all those abstain, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I also want to mention that we have been joined by Council Vice President Gordon, and we will now move on to the staff direction by Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This staff direction that should be in front of you right now is related to, it's a review of marketplace and businesses that are somewhat like Airbnb, Couchsurfing, HomeAway, and others. And basically, we, we're going to need to figure out a plan going forward as we come across these major events like the Super Bowl and the NCAA Final Four to determine how we allow this new and innovative business model to continue to function in our city, and we very much want it to continue to function while simultaneously offering a baseline regulation and equity in the rest of the, in other similar industries. There is really no specific ask here. We're not outlining exactly what's in the policy at this point. All we're doing is asking staff to, to begin the process that we're, you know, undoubtedly going to have to take up. I'll be honest, I really did not want to take this up, but I think that ultimately it's probably necessary.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Fry. Any discussion? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, just a couple of grammatical things related to the staff direction, nothing major, and hopefully it's just Council Fry, Councilmember Fry, these are just friendly amendments. But second paragraph, the work group shall be included, we should probably take out the "B." And the last sentence on second paragraph there, our key stakeholders in our marketplace, maybe the "our" should be taken out, but that's about it, though.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Councilmember Yang's input. The "B" should be taken out, the "our" should be taken out as well, and I would like to amend the staff direction to include City Attorney's Office as well, which I see has been missing. So the work group shall include representatives from the City Coordinator's Office, Community Planning, Economic Development, Finance and Property Services, Intergovernmental Relations, Regulatory Services, comma, City Attorney's Office, and Meet Minneapolis. So just adding City Attorney's Office to that paragraph.
Perfect. All right, the amended staff direction is before. So do we have any additional comments, questions, discussion? Not seeing any. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain, the staff direction carries. Thank you, Councilmember Fry. With that, we are moving on to the reports of our committees. First up, we have our Community Development and Regulatory Services chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. There are 10 items that are coming forward tomorrow for approval. Item number one is the modification, it's modification number 126, which says something, to the Ninth Street and Hennepin Avenue redevelopment plan. This is to facilitate the purchase that's already happened of the Solera Building by the Hennepin Theater Trust. Item two is a license application for the AC Hotel. Items three and four and five are also license and consumer services issues. Item six is a new license application. Item seven is requirements under Business Made Simple. Item eight is a rental license reinstatement. Nine are just a couple of minor changes to our home opportunity and down payment and closing assistance program. And item number 10 is our street cafe pilot program supplement. With that, I'll answer any questions on items one through 10.
Great. Not seeing any questions. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Moving on to our Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Chair Johnson. We have three items that will be coming forward. They're all relatively small grants that also went through the Ways and Means. Two of them are with the Minnesota Department of Health for additional lead poisoning intervention work, and one is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation that we'll be receiving to provide tree planting on Department of Transportation property. All right, happy to take questions, but that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. I am not seeing any questions, so we will move on to our Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have six items that will come up for council approval on Friday. The first item is a joint powers agreement between the BCA and 911. Second item is a travel expense donation acceptance. Third item is a contract amendment with the NPA. Fourth item is a contract amendment with Hennepin County for a detox van. Fifth item is a contract amendment with Stillwater Emergency Management. And the sixth item is a travel expense donation acceptance. And, Mr. Chair, if I can just make a comment, and I said this in the Ways and Means Committee, but, you know, with regards to item number five, which says Stillwater Emergency Management, that is not the municipality, that is an actual organization that's separate from the municipality itself.
Thank you for the clarification in the report. I am not seeing any questions or comments, so thank you, Councilmember Yang. We'll move on to Transportation and Public Works with Chair Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee is 40, 19 items for full council consideration. Items one through four are to support the budgets and activities of our special service districts. Item five is similarly for one of our municipal parking lots in South Minneapolis. Item six is the Downtown Pedestrian Improvement Project Amendment Contract for Architectural Historical Review. Item seven is replacement of quitclaim deeds as listed. Item eight is the Urban Forestry Policy Update. We had a good conversation on that presentation. Item nine is the passage of resolution declaring September 22nd, 2016 World Car Free Day in the city of Minneapolis. The following items are all referred to the reports of the Ways and Means Committee, and they all represent activities of, standard activities of the department. I'll stand for questions, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Reich. I'm not seeing any questions, so we'll move on to our Ways and Means Committee Report with our Chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ways and Means will bring forward 15 items for consideration on Friday. City Attorney's Office has five items on the agenda. Two are workers' compensation claim settlements, and then there are three legal settlements. There are two gift acceptance items, and then one grant acceptance from Greater Twin Cities United Way for the Talking is Teaching Talk, Read, Sing campaign. We have a contract amendment with Blackstone Contractors for the Powderhorn Gateway Art Restoration Project, and a contract with CPMI to be the city's project representative for a suite of services related to the new downtown office space building project. We also have the medical plan options for Medicare-eligible retirees of the city, a contract with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, regional analysis of impediments to the fair housing, addendum work. From the Information Technology Department, we have two contracts, and the final item is a appointed position from the City Coordinator's Office known as the Chief Resiliency Officer. Those are the 15 items we have on Friday. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. I am not seeing any questions, so we'll move on to our Zoning and Planning Committee with Chair Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is an alley vacation. Item number two is an ordinance amending our zoning code to amend the pedestrian-oriented overlay district on Central Avenue Northeast. And item number three- And item number three would be updating our zoning code passing an ordinance related to Skyway Design.
Thank you, Councilmember Bender. Not seeing any questions. So last but not least, we will turn to our Audit Committee with our Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had our Audit Committee meeting just yesterday. We received reports from our auditor, first in regards to system access post-employment, and second in regards to how we pay invoices, challenges, and importantly, some opportunities in how we can improve this process. But the single item that we are referring to council on Friday is the memo regarding our state auditor findings on people's soft access. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Palmasano. Not seeing any questions, so with all our business completed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1741.61]